Hey, this is Blaine Parrott coming at you from That Ain't Black Podcast in Seattle, Washington. In fact, I'm recording it right now in the Pioneer Square District of Seattle, and I got a really special guest. And I've probably said it a thousand, thousand, thousand times, all my guests are really special because it's really hard to get people on a podcast like this because it deals with race. And uh, race is a serious, serious subject and um, man, people shy away from once I send an email, they see the title of the show, they're like, nope, don't want nothing to do with it. But a lot of people are really brave and bold and really step on up and try to make those changes. And I got a great guest with me. His name is Jermaine Holly. He's a King County Council member. How, how you doing, man?
I'm doing good and it's pronounced Germai, Germai. Like my guy Germai, like my guy Germai, if that helps.
Okay, sorry about that, bro. But because I've been trying to get you on my show and stuff, I sent you an email. I know you're a really busy guy. I was the council, we got all this kind of stuff going on right now. Why don't I go ahead and just shut on up? You go ahead and tell me your background because you're actually born, you were born here, but you were raised here, right?
That's right. Yeah, I grew up in uh, Rainier Vista, Holly Park, back when it was called Holly Park before it was New Holly. Uh, Skyway, since I was about three years old, I graduated from Bailey Gatzler Elementary in the C D. Mercer Middle School in Beacon Hill, and then finally I'm a Quaker Franklin High School in, in Mount Baker. Uh, those are, those are stepping stones that I took to where I got now and the South End is in my heart, the C D is in my heart. And I ran for office to try to make sure that people living in these neighborhoods can stay in these neighborhoods and also just have the safe, healthy life that they all deserve.
Yeah, because um, I grew up on South Beacon Hill. My mother used to be a community aide and she used to work in Holly Park when it was back in Holly Park days. Way back, same thing. And um, yeah, I knew about it, man. I grew up in Rainier Beach. Used to hang out in Vista right across the street from there, uh, went to St. Edwards, everything. I lived in the C, I live in the C D right now. I've been there for home room for last past twenty one years. Um, worked at Seattle Central, definitely got a lot of things in common. So you definitely know the South Side, the two oh six, you want to represent that. Because a lot of times unfortunately in the past, we don't get represented. And we get a lot of junk pushed up on us because of that. We don't have a good representation there. And let me go ahead and go a little bit back. Why did you want to, first of all, you were a lawyer, you went to law school, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's really great. Now, what in the world did you want to get in politics? More people would sit back up there and trust a, a car, used car salesman on Aurora Avenue than trust a politician?
You know, I, I going from Franklin High School to being a lawyer, it felt like I was climbing a bunch of professional steps. Uh, going higher and higher, getting more and more, you know, degrees and status and things like that. And then I finally found myself working at a law firm in New York and then a law firm in Seattle. And in both places, this is corporate law. I was doing mergers and acquisitions, startup companies. And every day I would just sleep under my desk, you know what I mean? Like eighty hours a week, ninety hours a week, a hundred hours a week, just staring at a computer, moving paper around. And it was great to get the training, the legal training. I made a lot of great relationships, but every day I felt really empty because at the end of the day, my purpose is to help my community to achieve more. Um, I, I couldn't sit in that law firm knowing that the community that I grew up with is being impacted by gun violence. And my mom is working two or three jobs as a nursing assistant, trying to make ends meet and uh, she can't afford her rent. She can't afford X, Y, and Z, just like so many people around the neighborhoods I grew up in. Um, people are not having the jobs they need. They're not having the safety they need. They can't retire with dignity. Um, and so I've always felt like something was pulling at my heart to, to go and do public service work. Um, at the same time, I had started a nonprofit to help seventh graders get mentors. Uh, seventh graders like the ones at Aki Karosi, which I launched my uh, nonprofit in to help those seventh graders get leadership development training. Um, get mentors so that they can get uh, letters of recommendation written for them. Um, and the more I worked in that space, the more I realized, man, mentorship is great, but there's a limit to it. You can't mentor your way out of these seventh graders going back home to a place that is unstable, where their parents are on the verge of getting addicted. Can't mentor your way out of bullets flying around, around you. You can't mentor your way out of um, not your school not having enough educational resources. And so things like that always made me feel like there is a bigger calling in elected office where you can actually impact uh, the upstream policy causes of the reasons that our young people are suffering in the first place. And so I ran for the King County Council to try to, to, to design those regional solutions for these systemic problems.
Okay, because I know you went up against Larry Gossett and he's been in the game a long time. And I'll be honest with you, this young bucks, he's gonna get, you know, kicked to the curb, man. Larry G's been in the community a long, long time. And I said, no, man, you know, he's not gonna do that, man. I mean, come on, man. Everybody know Larry. Even when you won, I was like, damn, really? Because right now, we're kind of, we're pretty liberal in Seattle. So open and welcome to new changes and stuff. How was that going against Larry Gossett? Was that intimidating? Because you're young, you're like thirty six. And I was like, you know, we got, just be realistic. You see, when you think of politician, you think of somebody older. Don't know, you know, and they just want to go with the flow. It's always been, oh, well, big deal. We worked for the last eight, ten, twelve years, big deal. Everyone knows them. They come around maybe four years, going through the churches, say their little spiel deal, people, black folks sit back and, you know, vote for them. What was that like?
It was beyond intimidating, like to the point where if I knew that Larry was gonna be running for reelection before I announced, there's no way I would have announced. Because you hear Larry Gossett's name, that's a household name.
Exactly, exactly. It's synonymous in Seattle.
It's, everybody knows Larry. He's been in the game for, you know, thirty years, just about. Um, he's done a lot of incredible work for our communities, including me, you know, he's, he did sit-ins at Franklin High School to protest discrimination. And then I was able to graduate from Franklin High School some decades later. So I, I, I have respect for my elders and I just fear what going up against him would have been like. The issue for me is that um, there were a lot of rumors about Larry retiring. Um, I went around and I asked a lot of people and everybody would confirm for me, yeah, he's actually been talking to people to tap them to run for his place because he's gonna be retiring this year. Um, so I announced my campaign thinking that he was gonna be retiring. And then I think what had happened is the people that he had tapped to run didn't want to do it anymore. So he decided to run again. And at that point, you know, I had already started raising money. I had already started knocking on doors, paying people, and I couldn't end my campaign uh, once he decided to run for reelection. And it was rough, like all of a sudden I was, I was that young guy who a lot of people didn't know who was challenging the man, you know what I'm saying?
Exactly, coming out of nowhere.
I, I, I would, I would walk into rooms and there would be people there just angry with me, like what's going on with, like why are you challenging Larry? So it was a really, really rough year uh, to be on the same ballot as somebody who I respect a lot, who has done a lot of incredible work. Um, but at the end of the day, it's not really about me or Larry. It's about the issues that we're trying to solve. And I felt like my campaign was right for the moment that we were in.
Okay, now what are some of the things, because we came from the same background, the same area and everything, what are the same problems that's going on in South Seattle that you're facing? And before I ask that question, you're the only brother on the council. I remember reading that. How was that in that experience? Because I know we're the only black person in the room, you dealing with people who don't come from your same kind of background. They don't come from your same kind of area, don't have your upbringing, don't have your struggles, don't, you know, they just don't do it. It's totally, totally different. How was that?
It's a level of responsibility that really weighs on you a lot because a lot of the policies that I'm uh, considering and that I'm voting on are not just abstract policies. They're not just academic. They are issues that are impacting my community every single day. So when I'm talking about gun violence, that's not just something that I'm opening up a laptop and, you know, seeing data points. People that I know, every year, multiple people that I know are being shot, people that I know are being killed. Um, when, when we're talking about gentrification, it's my aunts and uncles who are being pushed out of Seattle into Skyway and Federal Way. When we're talking about mental health issues, it's people that I grew up with at Franklin who are now living on the street, using drugs and going through a mental health crisis. So um, there's that aspect of it where it's just the stakes feel really high and it feels really scary, like if I don't do this, like somebody that I know is gonna be impacted, or if I do this, somebody that I know is gonna be impacted. Um, and so there's that. And then there's also the side of it that when you are the only one uh, on a council who looks a certain way or um, or relates to people in a, in a, in a certain way and you're the only one, then people will reach out to you from everywhere. You know, most council members focus on their district. Uh, if it's in my district, that's my issue. But if I'm the only one in the county and actually in, in the whole state, then people from all over King County, all over the state, reach out to me and my office for help on stuff. And that puts a big burden on my staff because I only have enough staff to focus on my district, but people from everywhere are reaching out to us. And we try to help as many people as we can, but now we're doing, you know, ten times the work that we're supposed to be doing based on the resources we have. So it's a lot of responsibility and it also spreads you thin. And that's uh, that's something that I've noticed. But it's also beautiful because like people welcome me into spaces with open arms. There's a level of trust that I have with people. Um, and that they are able to share things with me and, and collaborate with me in ways that I don't think they could if they didn't know that, you know, Germai's from here. He looks like me. He has experienced a lot of similar things as I have. So there are good, there are good sides of it and there are definitely challenges too.
Yeah, because a lot of people will make decisions in South Seattle beforehand, they, they don't even know zip code. And I'll be honest with you, I'm like, come on, man. I, you should really want me to sit back up there because one of the biggest things that if I get ever get in office that we care and we concerned about the community, you're not from the damn community. How the hell you know? Come on, what's your zip code? You come from Orton and Buckley and you making decisions about what goes on. And it's the old saying they say, if I don't tell you how to cook in your kitchen, don't tell you how to cook in mine. In other words, I'm not living in your, telling you what to do out there. You got a lot of nerve coming in our neighborhood, trying to tell us how to live and what's good for us. You guys are a bunch of paper pimps. They need to look at some stuff on a uh, computer paper or computer board or whatever. And they're making a big decision affecting our lives. And like the one of the biggest things is gentrification. Because I grew up in South Seattle. I'm good to go. I see a whole lot of white folks coming on in and a whole lot of stuff that wasn't there from back in the day. And um, housing like a big one. I'm like, oh my God, back in the Columbia City days when I grew up around eighty eight and something, you didn't want to be in that neighborhood. You get made fun of. Yeah, because I remember my boy used to live right there in the corner across the street from Starbucks. And I said, first thing I said, hey man, you gonna borrow my gun, man? We joking around and we was only like nineteen, twenty or something. And now they got houses going for half a million and up. And I've never in my entire life would have thought that would it ever happen. I would, I would have called you crazy, called you stupid. Uh, but it's coming on in and a whole lot of stuff that's back then, and it, let's be honest with you, it's for them, not us. You know, and um, and they're pushing like a lot of people who grew up around that neighborhood out and the houses are sky high, the rents sky high, it's really crazy. And um, being that you're the only one, a person, what kind of input, again, I'm gonna re-ask this question, can you put in there? Because like you said, they're from outside of district. They're like, whatever, you know, it was clever or whatever. Go ahead and tell me one more time about that.
I think when you're the only one, you can't uh, rely on your individual strengths. You really have to lean into the we and you have to lean into the collective and you have to build relationships and collaborate with the communities who you want to uh, prosper and do, do better, live better. And so for me, the strategy has been not to come in there and say, hey, I'm Germai, I'm the only black council member, listen to me. But instead to say, there are so many communities living in, in my district who have been neglected and who have been disinvested from for generations. And they all have the best ideas and the best uh, plans for what would be best for them. We as government don't know what's best for them. Nobody can tell you more about what is best for a community than the community itself. And so I, I think about a, a neighborhood like Skyway where I grew up in my high school years. Skyway has the highest proportion of African Americans in that zip code in the whole state of Washington. It's the blackest neighborhood in the state of Washington since the central district got displaced and gentrified. Um, but at the same time, it's also the neighborhood that King County has neglected the most in all of King County. Uh, for a long time, it had a policy of this is unincorporated King County. We want it to become part of Renton. So we don't want to invest long-term obligations into, into this neighborhood. Um, what that means is you got the blackest neighborhood being neglected and disinvested from uh, by its only form of local government. That's textbook systemic racism. And in that neighborhood, you have just hundreds and thousands of brilliant community members who already have developed the plans for what would make them a better community. They want homeownership options. They want better rental protections. They want a community center. They want better public transportation. They want more development without displacement. And so I got into office, I just listened to them and I worked with them and I marched with them and I wrote articles with them. Um, and I uh, I developed a policy agenda with them. And in my first year on the council, for the first time in history for this community that is the blackest community in the state of Washington, we were able to get ten million dollars to build uh, the first ever community center there, two million dollars to build a resource center there. Uh, ten million dollars to build affordable housing options and homeownership options there, six million dollars to expand public transportation options there. Ten million dollars of a participatory budgeting program where the community itself gets to decide how to direct those funds toward various capital projects in the neighborhood. And that's in one year. And in my first year, we were able to shoot. So it's uh, it's really about forming as strong a relationship as you can with the people who are impacted by the issues you're trying to solve and then marching with them in unity. Um, and that way you can use your collective power to pass a policy agenda.
Yeah, because I remember last year I went to a meeting, um, the church in Victoria, she asked me, Blaine, come on in. And then we were talking about the shock collar program about, you know, trying to bring that in. And it had got basically, it was kind of a joke, yeah, it got shot down. The people in the community, they live there, there was some white people there, brown skin people, people walking different kind of backgrounds, they wanted it. But they got shot down. I was like, why am I at this meeting when the people who are making this decision to give us the budget for this money wasn't really too much? Are making decisions. I was like, this is a joke. I wasted my time. This was stupid. I was like, it doesn't going against government is a waste of time. And I like, well, great, yeah, people like you and they're now pushing for that. And um, as far as anybody else who are currently our background, what would be your advice to try to get people to run for committees and run for council and be more active in the community? Because a lot of people just see it, let's be real, it's a joke. You mess around, you, it's the government. It's, it's the biggest joke in America, man. Come on, man. But it was necessary to be, to be involved so you can get decisions like that made. But a lot of times people are disenchanted, disenfranchised. It's like, it's a waste of time. It's stupid. It's dumb, especially with come from people from our backgrounds. What advice would you give?
I think the first thing we have to do is show people results. You know, there are a lot of people out there who correctly feel like, what's the point of running for office? Government doesn't do anything for me. Um, so why would I even do that thing? And for those people, I would say, first of all, you're right to feel that way. Second of all, I would want to make sure that you don't take what you see at the federal government, because I think, because the federal government is the most visible, you know, you've got the president, you've got Congress, it's the one that gets the most media attention. And it's the government where you see the least amount done, like they're just arguing all day and they're not serving us. And so people feel like that's not for me. I don't want to be part of that. But if you look at local government, a lot of positive change can happen in local government and a lot of huge dollars and budgets come through local government. Um, and so I can go down the list and share with people why it's important to run for local office and pay attention to local government. Uh, because every year billions of dollars are flowing through local government. And you can either be at the decision-making table, directing those resources, or you can be passive about it and let those resources go somewhere else that are not your priority. That's, that's a decision you can make. Um, so that's number one. I would tell people is it's very important to get involved. Number two, I would share with them that it's possible to be involved. A lot of people feel like even if I know it's important to be involved, that's not for me. That's for people who are, you know, highly educated, people who are well-connected politically, people who are just not, not me. I don't see me there. So that's, that's not for me. And I would tell you, first of all, look at me, you've got somebody who grew up in public housing in Rainier Vista, New Holly, went to Franklin and is in, in, in public office. And I can name you dozens of people in, in elected office who, who fit that kind of profile. It's for anybody who wants to do it. And the great thing about public offices, it's not like being a lawyer where you have to go to law school and you have to pass the bar exam and there are all these qualifications. Really, anybody who's a citizen can run for office. And uh, if you live, if you live where you're running and you're a citizen and you're able to run a campaign, there's no prerequisites. You don't have to go to college. You don't have to go to law school. Um, you don't have to have a public policy background. You can be somebody who's, you know, and you can be a teacher, you can be a custodial staff, you can be a, a maid, you can be an engineer, you, anybody can run for office. Um, and I'm not, that's not to say that it's easy. It's very hard to run for office because you still have to raise a lot of money and stuff like that. But nobody is barred from it uh, with a few exceptions. Um, so I would tell people it's very important and I would tell people that it's possible for you, like you, the person who's listening right now, it's possible for you to run for office.
Because I remember looking through the pamphlets and the books and you like, uh, they give you their expert Jose about who their background. Wow, how do you get it? Because most folks don't, I'll be honest with you, until you sat back and told me that, I didn't know. I thought you had to have certain kind of things. I'm, I didn't know. I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one out there who didn't know about that or ignorant about that. And it's incredible that anybody can run if they really do. And to my understanding that voting on the local level is a lot, sometimes a lot more important than local on the, maybe four years one has, they only have so much impact. And that was brought to my attention, uh, stuff that you vote for with people around here is a lot more, sometimes even more important than you vote on the federal level. And another thing I want to move on is that we having a whole lot of more black mayors in the bigger cities and everything, like New York, Chicago, L A. And I remember they bypassed um, Bruce and stuff, they did a thing and they bypassed him for some reason. I don't know. But um, politics has changed in the last four years, especially with Donald Trump and all that kind of stuff. How you feel about that? Because people are a lot more impassioned. The last election, you know, they had the big old squabble down in January sixth. But it was a record amount of turnout because beforehand, there's only like fifty percent of America even voted. They didn't give a damn. And they were fifty percent of people making decisions, but all this stuff that happened was the Donald Trump administration and all this voter scam and everything in a, in a January sixth squabble. And the one that's coming up now, because people right now, they're taking politics really, really seriously. I mean, it really, they, the guy tried to attack Nancy Pelosi's husband. There was a guy said there was a um, group of radicals who tried to get a lady in Massachusetts and um, attack her. It's crazy now. How, how the scheme of American politics changed from your perspective?
There, I think there's a so many, there are so many things happening right now, but I think the way I would summarize it is everybody is retreating into their own corners of their comfort zone. Uh, we thought things like the internet were gonna make us more connected, make us understand each other better, make us see other people's viewpoints uh, more clearly. Because you have access to all the information in the world in front of you. But instead, it's had this counterintuitive effect where now people are listening to the people who are more like them and uh, kind of abusing and not listening to people who are different than them. So instead of, you know, everybody turns on the local news and everybody's watching the same local news, now everybody is opening the specific little corner of the internet that uh, says the things that they like to hear. You know, if you're conservative, you're gonna listen to Fox News. If you're progressive or liberal, you're gonna listen to MSNBC. And even less of that now, actually, people are listening to those things less and more just, what is this random account on Twitter that I like saying that, you know, makes me angry? Um, and so the internet feels like it's more dividing us and people are profiting from that division. Now, the fastest way to go viral on Twitter, the mo, the fastest way to get as many likes as possible is to say the thing that makes somebody angry and to make somebody, and to blame some other group that's not your own. And so it's making people, uh, it's making division and sensationalism and conflict more profitable. Um, it also feels like people are don't, there's a, there's a price to pay for having nuance, you know, if, if I say this thing is bad, that's the thing that's gonna go viral. If I say this thing is bad and, you know, a little bit of nuance, a little bit of nuance, a little bit, nobody gonna listen to that. Like you might actually, you might actually be called out like a sellout or something if you say something. It's not the right thing. So I think what's going on is people are becoming way more divided, way more polarized. Uh, there's way more misinformation out there. People are angrier. People have way more mental health issues right now. There's more anxiety. There's, you know, opioids and, and other drugs flooding into our communities. So people um, are becoming more addicted and anxious. It's just a lot of uh, anger and not a lot of bridge building that's happening in politics. It's more so, you know, I hate that side, you hate that side. Let's just argue with each other on, on the internet.
Yeah, because I'm glad you made that point because I had, I reached out, tried to reach out to everybody, the black community, and I had five black Republicans. And I thought for sure, I said, I'm gonna really, because a lot of times they don't like to get on, to be cussing, yelling, screaming, saying all this stuff, Coons, sellout, Uncle Tom, all those kind of names. So I got up there, I tried to flip the script and keep it real cool and professional. And I thought for sure, for sure, I was gonna get thousands. I ain't darn near got no damn body. And it's so, so bad. I make a joke about it because Republicans are supposed to be conservative and um, really Christian. And I have Mendisa Thomas, she's a black atheist. She got more viewpoints from them than all of them put together. I'm like, oh my God, the atheist black woman. Yeah, and I don't do that. I just upload them. That's about it. I don't spend thousands, hundreds of dollars. And that was crazy. And I'm like, this is crazy. I'm trying to be cool and calm and polite, give me respect. Well, I ain't getting nothing. And you just proved a point right there. You do something radical and stupid and dumb, you get thousands of downloads and thousands of hits and people coming at it. That's crazy. Because the last plus, like I said, last past four years in America, the political scheme all over has been crazy. You can't turn on the television. Any other day was about one side arguing about another side and this dude doing this and this guy's doing this. So what's your feeling with the um, upcoming presidential kind of stuff? I mean, you got any feelings on that?
Uh, man, it's gonna be tough. I, I, I don't, I don't have any special knowledge, but all the, the polls that I have seen show that um, uh, Donald Trump has a really good chance of, of beating uh, Joe Biden. Um, yeah. Uh, that, and the kind of analysis that I read shows that there's just uh, there seems to be a drop off in the number of uh, reliable Democratic voters, you know, in the past. Black and brown people and uh, younger people used to be more of a reliable Democratic voter. And now for a lot of reasons, based on the polling, maybe they're not ready to vote Democrat as much as they were in the past. And uh, it seems like that's hurting Joe Biden and uh, um, the, the polling that I've seen was very careful to say that this is not a poll that shows that Donald Trump is becoming stronger. He's actually become weaker, but Joe Biden has become weaker than him at a bigger rate. So.
Yeah, I'm like, oh my God, I mean.
The other thing people focused on was his age, uh, Joe Biden's age, you know, he's already the oldest president in history. Um, I think he was already the oldest president in history, the last time he won. And now he'll, he would be like eighty two years old when he runs. And um, it seems like most people have an issue with that.
Mm-hmm. Wow, okay. Um, also, what's going on around the neighborhood here? I mean, what do you got? What's on your table? What's on your, what's on your porch? What's going on, man?
The number one things that I'm focused on right now are uh, the mental health crisis, the addiction crisis and the gun violence. Those the mental health crisis, the, uh, addiction crisis and the gun violence, those three things. And of course, they're all connected to a lot of other stuff, like homelessness is connected to that. Um, jobs are connected to that, education's connected to that. But in terms of just trying to organize my thoughts, I think about, a lot about mental, mental illness, uh, addiction and gun violence are the three things that I see a lot happening in our community. Uh, actually, as of today, I think Seattle just beat its all-time homicide record.
Yeah, yeah.
In nineteen ninety-four, that was the previous record, sixty-nine homicides in a year. Um, and then this year, I think as of today, uh, seventy homicides for, uh, twenty twenty-three, which is the all-time record uh, since records have, have been kept. Um, and it's the same trend for King County at large. I don't know if King County at large has broken its all-time record, but definitely a huge uptick from last year. And, uh, the biggest upticks were since the pandemic started. So I think a lot about gun violence and I've lost people in my life to shootings. Uh, every neighborhood in my district reaches out to me regularly saying that they hear shots regularly. And so I do a lot of community organizing, I do a lot of, um, violence interruption. I do a lot of space activation to make sure that, uh, areas that are hardest hit have more foot traffic and better lighting and, uh, more relationship building and more food and more de-escalation training and and, and so many other things to make sure that we have fewer shootings. Um, and then of course, a lot of upstream stuff to make sure that our young people especially have more after-school activities, have more mentorship, have more things to do because the pandemic shut down so many things that people usually rely on for stress relief. Um, and so that, that's one issue that I think about a lot. And then of course, like I talked about before, the, the mental illness and addiction crisis. Everybody sees it everywhere you go. You can't walk a foot in our city without seeing somebody who has untreated um, uh, mental health, behavioral health, addiction issues. Um, and a big part of that is that our state has just not made the investments that we need to have more places for people to go when they are in crisis, you know? If you're going through a mental health crisis or you're going through an addiction crisis, there's almost nowhere for you to just walk into other, unless you wanna go to the emergency room or, or jail, there's not a lot of place options for you. Um, and so I, I was able to pass this past year with my colleagues, um, the, one of the largest investments in, uh, recovery infrastructure in our state's history. So one, uh, we got one point two five billion dollars to build five recovery centers around King County, where people can just walk in and get access to that kind of mental health and substance use care that they need to make a, a recovery.
Okay, cuz yeah, definitely with the gun violence, cuz there was a shooting in the CD last night and the guy just got up and walked away. They got into it like a, like a, it's crazy, like something on TV, like two cars going at it. And there was another shooting, that was terrible in front of childcare center. Cuz I remember, that's why I was able to hook up with you and give you my business card so we can get on this show. And I'm like, oh, my God, brother. What would your advice be to get blacks, man, to get other black folks in the community? This is ridiculous. This is off the damn chain. This is, I mean, come on, bro, you shoot, you shooting into a childcare center. Every damn body black can agree, that's messed up. Strong language, come on, man. Kids, kids.
Yeah.
Kids.
Kids.
Children. That's where you draw the line. That's where you get mad, you gotta cuss and I don't wanna do that, but come on, man, you draw the damn line. You sitting back up there, big old, when childcare, you, you, your funky ass is sitting up there shooting into that? Come on, man. This is embarrassing. We just had two years or whatever with the George Floyd stuff, with the Black Lives Matter, we run around here doing that to us. And it's looked like it's off the damn chain. It's just ridiculous. Cuz I remember, uh, like I said, I live in the central district. And I remember they closed down Starbucks right down there, it used to be in front of Franklin. They had a shooting in the middle of the daytime, two o'clock in the afternoon. And you got thousands of cars going past there. That was one of the reasons why they closed it down. And I was like, you guys are really shooting each other in the middle of the daytime? In the middle of the daytime? Of thousands of cars? Come on. It's ridiculous. The black-on-black crime here is ridiculous, it's stupid, it's embarrassing to us, it's embarrassing to everybody black. Cuz this is ridiculous. What kind of maybe advice would you go out there and give to the other brothers in the street? Cuz you're making black people on the whole look bad.
I would say, uh, don't wait for anybody else to solve the problem. Every single person in our community has a responsibility and the ability to prevent gun violence. And that's because gun violence is such a big and multifaceted issue. You know, you can prevent gun violence by mentoring a young person. You can prevent gun violence by event organizing. Organizing events outside of key places that tend to see shootings. You can do gun violence prevention by giving out hot meals and, and food and taking care of people. You can prevent gun violence by loving somebody and giving them a hug and asking them, how are you? What's really going on? You can prevent gun violence by, uh, creating more opportunities for mental health and therapy. You can prevent gun violence by, uh, advocating for local schools to have more resources. You can prevent gun violence by creating a basketball program, a youth football program. You can prevent gun violence by going to Olympia and advocating to the state to have better gun safety laws. You can prevent gun violence by X, Y, Z, one, two, three. And so that means every single person should ask themselves, what is my role? What is my gift? And what can I do to contribute to the safety of my community? So don't wait for anybody else. Rally, get people together. Everybody ask yourself, what can I do? And then go do that thing.
Okay, wow, man, you've been a really, really great guest here, man. And I really appreciate you taking time out with me and going ahead and give me some of your knowledge and giving some of the people, not just in Seattle, Washington, but whoever right now is listening to this podcast, so around America, I don't care, it's LA, Chicago, little small town, big town, whatever. Cuz I always like to emphasize and put important black, not just important black people, black people who are reaching out. You know, and like I always say, breaking the stereotypes, changing the narrative, that black folks do a whole lot of stuff, a lot of positivity. And I want people, uh, young blacks especially, to look up to somebody and say, hey, man, if that brother did that, I can do that too. I, I, I'm not gonna be the only guy in the room. I don't know, I can sit back and look up to somebody and have a great mentor. And thanks a lot. And before we go, man, um, is there anything coming up with you that you wanna say, hey, I'm gonna be at this rally? Or I'm gonna be doing this? Or you can go to this website to get more information or what?
I think I got a follow-up over email about specific events, but the website that people can, uh, do to follow me, uh, they can follow me on social media, uh, I'm at councilmember.girmay, that's C-O-U-N-C-I-L. M-E-M-B-E-R, councilmember.girmay, G-I-R-M-A-Y. That's me on Instagram, on Twitter, I'm at Girmay Zahalai. Um, I think you can just see my name, it's a lot to spell, but, uh, it's just at Girmay Zahalai on Twitter. Um, my email address is girmay.zahalai@kingcounty.gov and I look forward to hearing from people.
Okay, well, thanks a lot again for being on That Ain't Black Podcast with Blaine Parrot. And I hope you have another successful campaign and, um, be able to, um, bring some more money, especially in South Seattle, cuz we need it. We're gonna collect it and dog to the side and kick to the curb. We need a lot more people like you pushing up for us. And thanks a lot again for being on my show, brother.
Thank you, Blaine. Have a good day. See ya.